I'd like to call the September 18th Duval City Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Would you please rise and comply, by councilmember Jason Walker? Thank you. Clerk, would you please take the floor?
Councilmember Greg Micky.
Here.
Councilmember Iyer.
Here.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Rannington.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Antrim.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
We have a horn.
Thank you. Under additions and corrections to the agenda, under consent agenda, please add payroll for September 5th, 2018 in the amount of $173,710.29, and payroll for September 20th, 2018 in the amount of $111,256.47, and claims in the amount of $242,949.6. Under ratification of contracts under declaration of emergency, please add #2 professional services contract #20-23 with Sound Deployment Solutions LLC for coaching and skill development for wastewater treatment plant for an amount not to exceed $9,500. Under new business, please add Item 3 Agenda Bill 18-57, approved and authorized by Mayor to sign legal services retention agreement with Keating Buckland &amp; McCormick, Inc., PS. Other, are there any councilmembers that will be attending the September 26th SBGA meeting in Duval, Michelle? Amy. Have you already answered your feedback or?
Most of you have.
Okay.
And Mikey, so did we know?
It's a branch, right? Yeah.
That was great. So if we do have a horn, Joey needs to do a notice. We made up a horn, but we're not going to discuss, take action. But we can definitely have a horn there. That's good to have a horn in your home city where it needs one.
Are there any councilmembers that would like to speak this evening? All right. Seeing none, do we have a motion to adopt the council agenda this evening? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Ratification of contracts under declaration of emergency, do we have a motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any comments from the audience this evening? So please approach the podium with your name and address.
Hi, um, please. Please in favor, please, the Snow Valley Senior Center. My address is, hardly ever use my address. It's 4610 Stevens Avenue, Carnation, Washington. And I just wanted to, a couple of things. First, I wanted to invite the council to the Snow Valley Senior Center's annual gala. We're having a masquerade auction and gala on October 13th. Oh, we'd just love to have you there. We really would. The other reason that I am here is to speak to the budget and to strongly encourage you to invest in health and wellness in your citizens for both the young and the old. So both the Snow Valley Community Network and the Snow Valley Senior Center are asking for $10,000 each from the city, which is a very small, small, small percent of the general budget. And it's much less than many other Eastside cities give, and yet Duvalage now has some of the highest growth around. We encourage you to invest in your citizens, in their health and their wellness, but also it's, an investment has a return. And that return is seen not only by the citizens, but also by the nonprofits that you support with this, because we're able to leverage this money to raise so much more money. So that amount of money is multiplied many, many times over as any investment is. So I just hope you'll remember human services amongst all the other competing demands that you have in the budget this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak this evening? All right, seeing none, moving on to scheduled items. My report this evening, we've already discussed the Snow Valley Government Association coming to the Grange Cafe on Wednesday. And last week, I attended the Sound Cities Association Networking Dinner with Councilmember Spoken, Councilmember Rannington. There was a legislative panel update, which was nice to hear, kind of a preview of the upcoming legislative session. And also wonderful to have a couple of councilmembers meeting, and I know Councilmember Rannington got to see lots of folks sit from his old days working at the city. And it was nice to see everyone connect. So thank you guys for coming with and being a part of that event. Last week, the police chief and I had a meeting with Chief Burke to talk about fire district issues and the fireworks ordinance that we're bringing forth today. I also had a meeting, one-on-one meeting with Dr. Smith from the school district, just talking about just the issues and our jurisdictions working together. So it was really good conversation that in addition to our monthly staff meeting, we plan to get together one-on-one this quarterly, I think, to touch base on the finer points of our jobs. The Sound Cities Association Legislative Committee had a meeting last week. I was not able to attend in person, but I attended by conference call, and so we're starting to draft the draft agenda that will go to the publications committee that was based on issues that have previously been brought forth to Sound Cities. I also had the privilege of speaking at the Duval Rotary two weeks ago, I believe now, almost two weeks ago, and provide an update of what's happened this year and what we expect to see happening here in the future in the next few months in the city. And it was an honor to be there, and I appreciate the hospitality of the Duval Rotary for that. Also had a meeting, Diana Hart and I met with Emily Newcomer and Melvin, one came out of our last name from Waste Management. As folks know, our franchise agreement is going to come to an end in the not-too-distant future, and we have to make a decision whether we're going out for an RFP or renegotiating the contract. So Diana is doing research with other cities, and will be bringing forth a presentation to councils so the council can make the decision at a future date. We've been talking preliminary with Waste Management about things that we would like to see in the contract and services we'd like to see provided to our community. And they're very receptive, however, we are going to be in a tough position because of China Sword, so we will have several options in front of us. Are the renegotiation, we can extend the contract and hope that China Sword calms down, but we will have lots of options coming forward, and we'll discuss others group and make a decision as a team. Also had a meeting in the Eastside Transportation Partnership last Friday. That group, we received an update on the non-laborious bike plans for the state, so that was quite an interesting presentation. I also had the privilege for the first time of being on the mayor's panel for leadership Eastside at Caspia Community College. There were a couple hundred folks there, and it was mayors from all over the Eastside panel discussion, and we talked a lot about inclusion and diversity in our communities and what we're doing or what we intend to do. It was a great event and an honor to be up there with all the fellow mayors. Tomorrow, we have the Sound Cities Association Board meeting to do our normal monthly business. We'll also be receiving a two-hour training on a list of buys, which I'm really looking forward to, and depending on how it turns out, I may be interested in bringing it to the city as a whole. And then finally, Regional Transit Committee will be meeting tomorrow afternoon as well. So I think that's all I have for today. It's been, besides all of these other events, it's been budget, budget, budget. We've been, the staff spent, we spent dozens of hours, literally an hour in conference rooms going over the budget requests with all of staff. This is the first time, I know I talked to council last night for the public, but this is the first time that more than department directors have been involved in actually rewriting the budget and presenting the budget to the administration and discussing budget requests. And we intend that when the mayor's budget is released, that we have many of those employees come and present to the council, so you can hear firsthand from those that are developing their budgets and what they're spending the money on, why they need the money, or why they're requesting it, or why they need to do what they need to do. It's definitely increased the transparency of the budget process internally significantly to a level we've never seen in the city before, and that will lead to that effort as we move the budget process forward, so that's really exciting. And it's been a really collaborative process, I think, to date, and everybody recognizes there's going to be hard choices, but we're all coming together as a team to talk about our needs and what we need to do as a city, and there really isn't any extras on the list at this point. It's all about core services and making sure that staff has the resources necessary and the equipment to do their jobs, which in some cases is starting to fail pretty significantly at this point. So that's what I have to, does anyone have any questions? All right, thank you. And no reports from the council, so we'll move on to King County Fire District 45. Chief Burke.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm David Burke, I'm the fire chief. I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit of information about the fire district. Starting with calls, we had the slowest August that we've had in the last four years and run 94. We're still on pace to exceed 1,000 for the year, and so far in the month of September, we have 44. The bond election is coming in November, and we will be hosting an information night for that election on October 18th at our headquarters station, starting at 7:00 PM. And we invited the public to attend and encourage them to come and ask questions, and that includes any of you or any of your constituents. The recent changes in the weather have lifted the burn ban in our district effectively today. We're very pleased with that, that means the weather's cooler, it's a little moister, and so things are a lot safer. You may have noticed several of our uniform members going through the businesses in downtown and not doing inspections, and kind of wondering what's going on. Maybe a business owner said, hey, a couple of firefighters have come in here and it's strange, and they have tape measures and stuff. We're taking advantage of, a couple of our members have been injured and they've been on days as they recover and transition back to full duty, and so what they're doing is they're updating every one of the pre-fire plan that we have for each of the businesses, the buildings. And what that does is simply a little quick reference, not just for our responders, but for all those mutual aid coming in, about specifics of the building, where the sprinkler connections are, where the hydrant is, where the chemicals are kept, where the exits are, fire alarm control panel, et cetera. And so they're made available through our dispatch center, and they appear on the mobile data computers in each of the responding units. So for example, if one of our mutual aid units, if we have a fire on Main Street somewhere, then our people who are here every day, they know the building very well, but those people from Woodinville or Carnation or Redmond may not. And so they can instantly look on the way here, and if they're assigned to go to the sprinkler connection, or go to the fire alarm control panel, or whatever it is, they have it right there. And so we're also coordinating with the school district to a greater detail to talk about evacuation muster points and those types of things, so we can have a better accountability for students as well. So it is a really great process, and it's a really good thing for us as we take it into modern technology, and I think it's going to help us do our job better and mitigate emergencies for the community. So if you see them, we're probably about 50% through with the project, and I'm really excited about it. It's been long overdue, the resources are tough these days. I know on the agenda, we're going to be talking about the emergency ban, and the mayor referenced it in her report, but we've been coordinating with the draft language, I'm excited to be talking to you about that a little bit later in the evening. So now, it's one of those times of the year, as our chief, I'd like to take just a couple minutes and talk about fire prevention. This will be the last meeting that I have before the actual week, so it's important that I get that information out, so if you'll please bear with me here. We'll be in the schools for fire prevention week in October, as we always are. Fire Prevention Week is observed each year during the week of October 9th in commemoration of the Great Chicago Fire, October 8th, 1871. And that devastating damage killed more than 250 people, left 100,000 homeless, and destroyed more than 17,000 structures, and it burned more than 2,000 acres of land. This year's campaign is Look, Listen, Learn, or Be Aware, Fire Can Happen Anywhere. And it works to educate people about three basic but essential steps to reduce the likelihood of having a fire and how to escape safely in the event. The look. Look for places fire could start. Take a good look around your home, identify potential fire hazards, and take care of them. Listen. Listen for the sound of the smoke alarm. You can only have one minute to escape safely once the sound of the smoke alarm goes. Go outside to your meeting place, which should be a safe distance from the home where everyone should never meet. And lastly, learn. Learn two ways out of every room and make sure all doors and windows leading outside open easily and are free of clay. Now, we can go into any detail at a later time, I'm happy to do that, but thank you for kind of adulting that. This is a very important thing, and fire education is something that we sometimes take for granted, and so it's not just in the schools, it should be in the businesses and with everyday people as well. Lastly, on the board, I'd like to talk about deployments. If you've been following the news, you've seen the hurricane on the East Coast. We have two of our members that deploy as part of an overhead or supervisory team to help mitigate some of those problems. I heard from one of them today, and they are, I believe they're making a difference. They've been doing everything from secondary rescues to delivering supplies and things like that, and so part of this deployment will be gone for, they estimate, at least two weeks, and so I guess it's been gone four days now. We're just happy to participate in stuff like that, because, I hope it never happens here, but because our people are exposed to the different types of emergencies, not just wildland deployments, but anything else, we are prone to flooding. But the more experience that we have interacting with those response agencies at the federal, regional, and state levels, it makes us that much better prepared in case something ever happens here. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions from the council.
Does anyone have any questions for Chief Burke this evening? As always, thank you so much for coming and sharing your news with us.
We're not done with the, have to replace a vote for.
Oh, yes. We do not have any presentations this evening or any public hearings, so we'll move on to new business. Agenda Bill 18-55, adopting a new ordinance, excuse me, adopting a new pay scale for City Public Works Director, driving perseverance and establishing effectiveness. Do we have a motion? No, second? Okay. Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of our community. We'll go to a presentation that we gave in our cow and go into a couple of the slides really quick. So as all the community knows, that we have a vacant position open for our public work director, and we're in the midst of updating the position and starting the recruitment process. So we have now completed the wage and benefit analysis, we've updated our job description. We've also reviewed what we consider a fully loaded cost of the public works director, and we're working currently to create a recruitment document. I talked a little bit to council about this this evening. It can be hard for a small city to recruit and retain, and I was at a training not too long ago that talked about how do you create the promotional materials to bring in somebody that you want to work there, and you tell them why you want them, and cover why this is the right place. And so Public Works is taking a knee on that, and we'll probably use that going forward and just update it according to new statistics for that head or position. Our next step in this process is for council to approve the pay scale and begin the recruitment process. We did look at several comparable cities. We did have to take some of those cities out of that, but we just couldn't necessarily compare ourselves to them. They were larger, they paid more. They may be where we get people leaking to, but we're just not able to compete with them. And so we did look at several, you know, fairly similar communities, and we took what is their, you know, what is their population as of this year, what is their cost of living index, how many people do they manage, do they have a deputy under them, are they a senior engineer, do they have a city engineer, do they have longevity pay, what are their medical costs, what are their medical for family costs? And so it was much a robust analysis that we could do internally without hiring out that process. So what it comes down to, the nuts and bolts, is we would throw out the highs, throw out the lows, and see where we landed. And so we looked at doing an average of all of the cities that we looked at after we threw out a couple here earlier and took out the high and the low. And so we looked at what is that average, and it's just over $9,300 on the low end and just over $11.7 on the high end. And so on the low end, that's about a $500 shift upwards, and on the high end is about $1,100 shift upward. We also want to always look at where our public works directors go, and so we looked to see where our previous directors had gone, and they've gone to the city of Snohomage, the city of Marizville, the city of Wackel, and then we described what was their position. So three of them went on to be public works directors in larger jurisdictions, and one went to be an operations manager. And so we looked at that, so that's at least where we need to accommodate what we do. So what we also did, because I think this is always really important for us to look at, and is really important for our council to look at and understand, is how do we pay for this position? You know, when you look at the public works director, they're paid out of many funds, but when you look at the planning director, the majority of my wage, actually all of my wage as a planning director is general fund. So what we did is we wanted to look at what is our current FTE breakout, so you looked at there, engineering parks, streets, water, sewer, and the storm. So what we did is we looked at, under the current salary band, and our previous director, he's been here a while, or he was here a while, and so he was at the top of that scale, so his fully loaded cost to the city was about $184,000. Under the new scale, new proposed scale, if that person were at the top of the scale, it would be about $201,000 with all of their salary benefits, and that is a delta of about $17,000. But probably the most difficult place to absorb this within the city is obviously your general fund, so that's your engineering parks and streets, and that's just over $6,000, $6,000 in additional wage compensation. I think that was it, unless we have any additional questions.
Any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Walker.
Just one I didn't think of earlier. So on that split between engineering or standard, everyday parks, which is general fund, then we have our utilities, streets, water, sewer, and the storm. Is there any, or what is the reasoning to the formula of how that is, how the discipline is split?
That is a really good question, and we actually track that within our departments that are here, and that's how we use to forecast those future years and how we allocate the FTE. So public works keeps us by shape.
Of the time that they incur for each discipline?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm finding the general fund would be nice if, or maybe not nice, but if some apartment, like wastewater, for instance, needs a little bit more help, then maybe efforts could be focused on in most apartments.
And that's a really good point, because there are years where I think we are heavier, so we are really trying to watch that. So we actually do reallocate the FTE splits on a yearly basis. So this year, we were heavy on strong water, because we did a strong water plan, but we also are a little heavier right now on sewer, because we're, you know, we're working within that department. Next year, we're going to be doing a water comp plan, so it honestly, it just, it's like a shell. Some years it's here, sometimes it's two out of the three, and so we just, I think that one may be the hardest. And then engineering can be higher in really busy development years, but we have a second engineer, and so they're doing a lot more of the project review. And then the new public works director won't have to be our, helping officials anymore, so that at least takes it out of more general fund, so we watch a little bit of that general fund.
So the council member Antrim. Mayor President Meyer.
I just wanted to say how helpful this presentation has been, and the expanded information. I have a little hard-earned first presentation, you know, because when we were being compared to some of those bigger cities, and I feel like this is a reasonable approach. I like the extra information, especially this last slide, just to understand where this cost increase will hit, and I think, you know, general fund, as Jason said, can be, or Councilmember Walker mentioned, is a really tough fund, and we have to watch in our senses, so this was especially helpful to see. So thank you very much.
Mayor President Meyer.
Yeah, so I had to, kind of my apprehension about this coming into it, and I am so concerned about the secondary ramifications that are going to go throughout the pay scale. I'm a little concerned that we're kind of pulling on string with this, and it's just a very difficult spot that cities in in terms of the size and the tax base, and which is a really unique challenge, because looking at the nearest cities, they do have a more significant sales tax base, which, it just makes it more difficult to compete, but I also appreciate that we want to get the best people we can. I guess, I'm concerned about how it's going to affect the rest of the pay scale, and whether we can afford it on a whole, but.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Councilmember Greg Micky. Aye. Councilmember Iyer.
Aye.
Councilmember McHenry.
Aye.
Councilmember Rannington.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoag.
Aye.
Councilmember Antrim.
Aye.
Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. I know it's very difficult when we're looking at these things, and that we've got a lot to look at as a city, and I appreciate you taking the leap right now as we're going through the budget process to make sure that we can get this position built as soon as possible and get to the point of not having to pay consultants twice the rate of public work directors, so thank you for helping move that forward. Next item of business is Agenda Bill 18-56, authorize one additional full-time FTE equivalent for the wastewater treatment plant. Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again, and members of our community. I will now go back to the presentation. So administration is requesting a fourth FTE within the wastewater treatment plant that was not planned for early on in the 18 budget, but we do have payment with this in our existing budget to accommodate it. We're working towards this goal, and we have a pending retirement within that department. We're trying to complete some succession planning, and we want to have continuity of operations. It is a pretty small department, and so when one is out, it can definitely impact the group, and if you have somebody go out on, whether it's, you know, long-term leave, medical, whatever it is, it would, it would challenge us. We're also working to go through a process, working at the FTE, and that will part
We're also working to go through a process of working at the FTE, and that will partly come from the contracts that we have out to help us with assistance on operation and maintenance and even our capital, our capital improvement plan scope of work. This position does have a hiring range of up to about sixty thousand five hundred twenty-two. That's the maximum, because we set that as part of the job description and that, sorry, not job description, the job announcement, and that would be step C. We did start going through the process because we thought we were going to have a retirement in July, and we requested that the existing staff member down there stay a little bit longer, because we were under staff at the time. We have completed the application process, the review process. We have done a pre-employment background investigation reference check. That was completed beginning of September. We do have a follow-up interview medical check that remains if the council approves the fourth FTE before we acknowledge a minor limit.
Does council have any questions? Councilmember Walker.
So if the other person retiring and then adding this position, will there be three eventually, or will we backfill the other when they retire as well?
That would be pending the FTE analysis. We're going into the eighteen, nineteen budget with a fourth position there, knowing that we can remove it. But we're going into the next year's budget with that request. I honestly can't stand to tell you that I know if we need a fourth person or not. There are other options you can look at potentially. Maybe you need three-point-two-five or three-point-five, and you look within your existing public works crew to see if you can put a portion of that person doing work within that facility that provides you the additional staffing. You could, you could look at entering into an ILA with another city so that if you have something like that happen, that, you know, we would be hopeful that maybe they'll be able to provide us support. But during this time, we really struggled with finding anybody with a wastewater treatment plant three, because that's what we needed at least up until last week. And it was challenging.
So a can operator certified?
Yeah, operator. Yeah, and to manage the plant by our permit, you have to have the three operated. We're not, you know, obviously looking for a three position. We have somebody that's going to be taking their three test and not somebody that we're working on succession planning with. The employee or the potential employee that would come in to this job would be a two operator. Currently, we have a one and a two and a four. The one challenge that we have with a wastewater treatment plant one operator is they can't necessarily operate the plant long, long term. So if you had, you know, one person out and only one person, like a one and a three, when they go out as a three, it's challenging. There's a lot of requirements that you have to meet down there on a daily basis, let alone the maintenance of the facility.
Councilmember Neffler.
I have the same question as Councilmember Walker. I'll just ask a little more about that. So when we authorize the fourth FTE, I'm still learning about how this works, that would mean that if this employee retires, we would have an open position? And then would we be required to then fill it unless council said, no, we don't want that? Or how, how does that?
We would come back to council. If we have not completed the FTE analysis, we would come back to council to talk her about it if we have a retirement before the end of the year. We're hoping that we do have some succession planning, because we have an employee that has, you know, essentially thirty years in the system, and we want to try and get as much information and data download. Where you're going to see that fourth FTE is in your nineteen, twenty budget. It's really a placeholder. So you could put a budget note that says, you know, pending FTE analysis. You're not going to fund it until we come back with the analysis. But we're just trying to plug it in as really as a placeholder. The last thing we want to do is try to like come back in a future date in a biennial budget. So I think having it there as a placeholder with the note is a, is a good way to go.
Well, I'll just add, we'll be utilizing budget notes significantly in this biennial budget. And this is one of those areas where we have to, we won't have the analysis likely back on what we actually need for the plant. So we will have, I know we don't even have to do it, it's just going to happen, to say that that fourth FTE position upon retirement isn't going to be filled until the FTE analysis is done and council approves. So if we need that fourth FTE, it'll be coming back and having that discussion and making that formal change.
Councilmember Nicky.
So this is a position that, as I'm trying to remember, I had this conversation, I think last year, that to fulfill that job, we, they need certification. And so one of the concerns was, of course, that you can't just hire someone right away, and they have to be certified. There is a process to have someone qualify.
There is definitely a process when you're hiring a wastewater treatment plant two operator. If you were hiring a wastewater treatment plant one operator, you could recruit somebody that may have water experience or water certifications or other, you know, kind of like. It's not that hard to get your wastewater treatment, I shouldn't say that. It's less difficult to get your wastewater treatment plant one license. And so it just depends on what you're looking at. For this position, it's a two, so we want somebody that already has that type of experience. But it really depends on what position you're hiring. I think there are times where you can go in and maybe recruit internally if you have one position open and they have experience already within the system, because they're potentially doing work down the treatment plant already, maybe doing some maintenance or doing some off-site work or doing water, water work.
Okay, and then second question would also cover us in a situation where we would need to move someone up in a position this year.
This wastewater treatment plant two position, you know, eventually, we always want to see people get their three credential, because a three is what it takes to operate the plant. If you're, like, if something went wrong, we always need a three. So I think we would always encourage somebody to reach, honestly, for that sky at that three position. And that's why we're working with one of our existing operators at the two to take his three, get his three certification.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker and then Councilmember Reddington.
Ayes, folks. Just a brief comment and one question. I do think it makes a lot of sense to try to hire somebody early when you have the expected retirement, especially in a small system where we can help have a good transition. And there are times when recruitment, first time you just work and you go back again so you can wind up with quite a period. And we don't want to run a deficit or we don't need to. And my question is, you mentioned doing an analysis. Wouldn't we expect to see an analysis on whether that fourth FTE is necessary or whether it would not be?
That's actually a task that's outlined in the sewer C I T plan. So that'll be, that'll be part of the sewer C I T plan parameters.
I think the timeline is probably the end of six months.
At least, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walker.
So this is one of the things that people don't understand about a small city that has, you know, not a lot of money, but it has everything to survive on its own, including its own wastewater treatment plant, which may have larger cities can share expenses for. So I appreciate the, the changes that are happening with that facility. And, and getting some more capacity, we'll see. And doing all we're doing, we'll see. Ultimately, it'll improve everything there or some things or something. And also then looking forward to, you know, closing the last part with the new public works director. Just this is a bit off topic, this related to this. I hope that we also would see an individual that would have maybe some background in full-service cities and utilities like this, so that can provide more, more ongoing guidance.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Iyer.
Yeah, comfortable with supporting the FTE in the short, in the near term, but the understanding that there's a permanent increase in staffing. Have we considered what, where we'd be at if everybody stays on board in a year or in that possibility?
I don't see the retirement not happening within the next probably six to nine months. I, I don't, I can't answer that question. It's one of the reasons why we, why we budgeted it. And so the thought is, is, you know, once we have that retirement, then that position is kind of in stasis, especially if the analysis isn't done, which I'm not sure that actually will be. So we might end up back at a three for a certain part of time until we know, do we need three-point-two, three-point-five, four, or whatever that is. So right now, if we approve this position, it locks us into that fourth FTE until we have that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Ms. Hope. I appreciate all that you've been doing, and I really think you guys are making good choices. And I am even more comfortable knowing that you're planning on doing a FTE analysis. I think that's an important factor in this, so thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. All those, oh, we don't have a motion on the floor yet? Oh, we did. Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next up is item number three, agenda bell eighteen dash fifty-seven, improvement authorized mayor to sign a legal services retention agreement with the Keating Buckland McCormick Inc., P.S. Ms. Thomas and Ms. Turpin.
Good evening, council. Nice to see you again, mayor, you as well, staff, Rachel Turpin, city attorney. This is a late add to the agenda. Our apologies for dropping it, but litigation is kind of like that. It just gets from you, and then you have short deadlines within which that you have to respond. And we have received another lawsuit from Ann Rock. She's sued the city before, as you were aware. That litigation is being handled by Chan Ragnesi at Kitty Buckland McCormick. And at this point, I would recommend that you retain her to assist you in this latest lawsuit, not as only as she familiar with the plaintiff and with the various cases. And it looks like from my review of the complaint, dredging up some of the prior cases that Ms. Ragnesi has been involved in as well. So I think she's probably the best situated person to help you with this. And I think the sooner you can get someone on board to at least start working on this, the better. So it gives them ample opportunity to file their answer, which is going to be due in early October.
Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Walker.
So I'm just not a big fan of open-ended contracts.
The good thing, the nice thing about attorneys is you can fire us whenever you want. So that, I agree. I'm the person who's constantly putting not, making people put not-to-exceed clauses in their contracts, because I like to cap things. Litigation's hard, because it's really hard to tell what amount you're going to have to exceed. And usually, you know, it becomes more of a, maybe can become a difficulty to try to come back and get amendments done quickly to get the additional funds that you need. Here, what I would recommend doing is just monitoring the expenses. And then if it looks like you're spending more than you think that you want to be spending on this, then at that point, we can reevaluate and see whether or not there, a change in attorney services would be wanted.
So I, I understand that. And also understand there's like a filing due in October, right? So that's like, there's some procedural component and some initial thing that needs to happen. That's understood. Could we have a report back or have, once we retain this attorney to represent us on that case, could we have him come back here, such a session?
I would recommend that. In fact, I wish we could get someone on board, and then I think we should have them come out to talk to you about the case. Just give them a little time to get their answer filed, get up to speed, read it, you know, the complaint. But then, yes, absolutely. And I think that person is probably going to be able to better answer your questions about what the potential cost for this could be. But we did pull the cost for the last litigation, just to kind of give you a, you know, a lot of it's can be quite similar. And it was about twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand dollars today for that. So honestly, that's, that's actually far less than I was anticipating that it was going to be. So I think you're kind of screaming deal with Kitty Buckland for that. If they're able to do as much as they've accomplished for the city with that, well, it's pretty impressive.
Okay, last question. I'm trying to keep this technical, so I know we're not supposed to talk about any of the aspects. I really want to ask, but I won't.
You can ask.
This is, I think, contractual, not about any merits of the issue. So the attorney's fee, if the city prevails, is that potentially recoverable or is that up to some other catchment?
I believe that in, unfortunately, the Pilgrims Act doesn't award attorney fees both ways, so I'm not sure that we would ever get our fees back from this block on for those issues. However, I believe in the prior case, motions for sanctions were brought, and in those motions, then you can request.
So those are all things we discuss with the attorney.
Yes.
I mean, so do you have a best estimate of what it would take someone doing similar work to do the filing? Is it ten thousand dollars or less or more?
Yeah, it would be less than that.
Less than. Is there any reason that we should have an open-ended, unlimited contractual arena?
I think, I think in this case, like I said, I normally recommend these, I think with certain types of litigation, it's very useful, because then we don't ever end up with a lapse in coverage, that could be attorney-client privilege issues or, you know, not, not having a attorney that's actually where to end for that particular case. Or, you know, they, you just might end up in the position where you can't have a special meeting to approve more funds if more funds are needed. But you could, you could put a cap on it now or something along those lines. My recommendation would be just to monitor it, but.
Mayor, you're speaking stuff. I'm having a very excited. Councilmember Reddington.
Probably unfortunately, in my last few years at Cityville, you have been involved with suits brought by citizens at times. And especially in cases where, where there's litigation that we feel like really are defensible, but we need to stand up to help protect our citizens and go after those with experienced counsel. And so I think this, to me, makes a lot of sense to retain somebody, especially who's had experience in the past with this individual. I see it as a very real and reasonable cost. None of us want to spend money to defend suits like this, but I think it's reasonable and something I support.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'm moved that we authorized a mayor to sign this agreement.
Do you have a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Motion passes, thank you.
I will follow up with Ms. Ragnesi about coming out.
Thank you. Uh, next up, under 10 unfinished business. Number one, Agenda Bill 18-52. Approval authorized mayor to sign a contract 28-19 with parametrics in the amount of $131,448.82 for the wastewater system evaluation and planning plan. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Ms. Grindell.
Um, no, good evening, Councilor Mayor. I was just going to say that this is a fine scope of work for our wastewater system evaluation planning, and I'm sure answering questions that you guys might have.
Does anyone have any final questions or comments from Ms. Grindell? Councilmember Adam.
I just wanted to clarify something. So that the FTE study would be a component of this to actually be done during this? Or is it just?
Yes, it is a component. It's outlined in task two.
Okay. And so you're saying that this project is about six months out? We hope we see any deliverables?
At least, yes. Um, hoping to be sooner with some aspects of it, but at, at least six months out, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Walker.
So in terms of capacity evaluation?
What's up?
Capacity?
Yes, it's, it's not, it's not done yet, but the preliminary numbers that they ran based on our population growth statistics that we, we provided them. Um, it looks like we're well within our bandwidth for capacity right now. And there's nothing to worry about, um, as far as the design and capacity.
So it's like a peer review of the other?
Yes, so once, so once, um, so once parametrics completes this early breakout task of the capacity analysis, um, and they will give us, and they'll help essentially in their findings, um, Gray Osborne would do a third-party review of their work, essentially.
Are they looking at schools as well?
Um, I believe that's part of the land use portion of what they look at. Um, for, it's not just single-family residents. They also look at, um, commercial. And I'm assuming that, assuming that school is in that because it's part of land use facilities.
Anything in land use, is that just, uh, current zoning? Or is that potential annexations?
It's, I guess it includes, it's part of the cooperatives look at. So it includes the new guy.
Newer land use?
Yes.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next up is Agenda Bill 18-53. Adopt ordinance, amending ordinance number 1200, adopting a complete streets policy to establish guiding goals, principles, and practices that will empower and direct Duval residents, elected officials, planners, and engineers to use an interdisciplinary approach in creation of complete streets that will result in increased access, mobility, and health for all users, providing for separability, and establishing an effective date. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Grindell.
Um, good evening, Councilor Mayor. Again, Ms. Grindell, the works. Um, nothing new has changed on this from the information that we provided in previous packets. It's really worth something of a policy that we already have. It's just making the policy stronger so that we can be competitive for grant funds in the future.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Grindell? Great, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next up for discussion only is Agenda Bill 18-54, an ordinance for the business license code update. Ms. Wykoff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Julie Wykoff, City Clerk. Um, before you is an ordinance to amend DMC Chapter 5.01, business licenses. Just for some historical knowledge for the, for the audience. Um, in 2017, state legislators passed new legislation requiring cities to adopt new model ordinance, uh, which includes language, uh, for a new definition for engaging in business as well as setting a threshold for, um, out-of-city businesses. At the last council meeting, council directed me to write the code to keep the minimum threshold at $2,000 and to also use the, uh, we call it the registration-only requirement for those out-of-city businesses that do not meet the threshold. They will still be required to register with the state, yet not paying a fee. Um, in this packet, I provided you with the draft ordinance and language. For the code amendments, we did find while we were reviewing this for these specific amendments, some other amendments that we felt was a good time to make these, you know, clean up the code a bit. So I'm here answering questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions or comments from Ms. Wykoff? Ms. Grindell.
So I, I think I asked this at the last meeting, um, looking at the criteria of registering and applying. How do, is there a way that we can monitor or know that everybody is getting that? Or does it kick in when they do their business license?
So they apply through the state. We use Business Licensing Services, or BLS, um, for all of our licenses. So starting January 1st, they're going to change the programming in their system so that when you're applying for a business license, um, if you state that you're doing business in Duval, then you will be required to put in what your gross income would be in the city. If you are, if your location is in the city limits, it doesn't matter what your gross income is. You still have to pay a fee and get a license for Duval. Um, but if you are, if your main location is outside city limits, say you're coming into town to do business, you, you will be, my understanding is that the system will force you to put in a dollar note. The unfortunate part is that it's on the honor system. So if somebody didn't want to be honorable, they could say that they make $1,999 and get away with not paying our city license fees. Hopefully, somewhere down the road, there might be something that will help us catch that. But as of right now, that's kind of where we're at.
And then is there revenue, um, is that revenue driven stats? We get some of that back?
We get the $55 from the state. Um, they charge an additional fee on top of our fee as just a, to get state license. And then each city has their individual fees and some have BNO taxes and some of them have head taxes. And so, um, it's all programmed into the BLS system. So, um, you know, if we ever decided to revisit our business license fee, we would notify the state of our new fee and then they would program that in. And yes, we do get, I think the last couple of years, it's been approximately $40,000 in revenue for business licenses.
Councilmember Walker.
So this happens at time of registration? You have to declare if you're going to make less than $2,000.
What your gross, yeah, what your gross income would be.
In Duval.
And every other state in this, or every other city in the state.
Okay, so your gross earnings for each?
Well, I mean, so, so if I, if I'm doing business in, say, Woodinville and Kirkland and Duval and Briar, I have to register what my gross income for each one of those cities is when I'm applying for one of their licenses. And if you are under the threshold, then you're not going to get charged for those city licenses. If you're above it, then you will.
Okay, so, um, I think a number of council members here have small businesses. I have one as well. So if I don't think I'm going to make $2,000 that year, I'll just declare that and then...
And then you wouldn't pay a city license fee?
Pay a city license.
Your business is located in Duval, it won't matter.
But if another contract comes in that comes in, then you make more. Can you retroactively update that or change that?
I don't know if the business owners would be able to go back and do it. Um, I would assume that if they don't have to pay a fee, they're not going to go back and...
Yeah, I think it's just hard to estimate, especially for really small businesses.
Yeah. And, and I'm not sure if this, if the state, if the BLS system is telling you to estimate it based on, you know, what your average is or what you think you're going to make, you know, that kind of thing, or if it's based on previous years. I'm, I'm honestly, I'm not sure how all that's going to come together.
I'm assuming it's best to just have people pay for the license to do any business here and not have the threshold.
Well, that would be a conversation to have with your legislators because this is not a choice for us, unfortunately.
Councilmember, I just had one more question, um, just by understanding this. So if you have a business in Duval, but you didn't make any money here, you made it outside of Duval, you still qualify?
You are still doing business in Duval. And part of the model language that we changed was the, was the definitions of engaging in business. And so if you actually read through this, it's pretty extensive of what they consider engaging in business in Duval. And actually, that's why we had to make some other changes because there were some conflicts between what we had in there versus what the new language says. And so we had, we had to change some of our other pieces of code. But if you are, if you have a home office and you use your laptop on your dining room table and all of your transactions are located outside city limits, you are still considered, if you register your business location in Duval, you have to pay the fee, no matter how much you make in Duval. Plus other cities as well. And then, yes, you'll register with the other cities that you're coming to.
Any other person, Mayor?
How long is a business license given?
One year.
I'm right, I'm comfortable moving forward as, as it is. Yeah, thank you.
You guys could choose to suspend the rules and vote on this meeting, or we can vote on it the next meeting.
As long as it's adopted by the sixth week, then it doesn't matter if we do it tonight.
It's up to you. If you want to do it tonight, somebody can do a motion. Otherwise, I'll put it on the next agenda for approval. Seeing no motion, we'll move on to the October agenda. Uh, last item on the agenda is Agenda Bill 18-32B, ordinance on emergency ban on fireworks. Chief Burke is out of field this evening, and so Chief Burke will be going solo.
Yes, sir. Second reading is Mayor and Council, and I am happy to present a modified version of this bill to you for your discussion on behalf of myself and Chief Burke. The history of it, it was first presented to you in May of this year. Um, after several years of discussion about the limits of the ability to have an emergency ban based on several factors of fireworks and trying to, I guess, mitigate the interest of public safety versus public interest, this is what we arrived at as probably the best conclusion. So if there were instances where fireworks could present a greater danger due to weather conditions, et cetera, then the city would have the ability to ban the use for that year. Not in a permanent status or anything else, but just because of the conditions at that time. So when it was first presented to you, a couple of questions came up and I apologize for I had to go back to my board and seek some additional counsel with them. And so what you have before you is a modified draft that includes a little bit different single language that says that the fire chief would make a recommendation to the mayor and the mayor could then enact an emergency ban based on, you know, either weather conditions or other factors. Somebody had asked me, you know, the kind of vague language. And I think it's important to note that, you know, all weather would probably be, if there ever was a ban, probably the 99% reason for that ban or the recommendation of such. But recently, unfortunately, in this country, there are civil disturbances that could cause that as well. And so maybe the, maybe the weather doesn't meet the threshold where it's, it's, yes, it should be a ban, but maybe there's a group that's threatening to protest here in town and bottle rockets are a method of choice. I can't think of every single definition of, of what could be an emergency. But the problem is the way the state law is so restrictive that you have to have a year to be able to go through and have changed the language. And if you get the cycle wrong and we are presented with the community with a threat that could be to public safety, I would hate to have a language loophole that wouldn't allow the council to do the right thing. And so that was a deliberate choice to leave that vague in the language. And then, I guess, uh, second to that, it, the language talked about the fire chief making the recommendation. And there's another restriction by saying the fire chief and not the bar chief or their designated. Currently, I am the fire chief of King County Fire District 45. On paper, we have FTE authorized but not funded for a deputy chief. So in my absence, they are the acting fire chief. The board has suspended that position after retirement. Maybe we'll fill it at the, at the beginning of next year, maybe we will not. The point that I'm trying to make is that in my absence now, currently, I do not name an acting fire chief. I was gone out of town this past weekend and I did not name an acting fire chief. So again, back to the language loophole, I would hate to have it say the fire chief. And if I'm out of town or whoever is in this capacity is not here for the Fourth of July, that the city be trapped in a language loop. And so these were all the advice that you, our, of our council and my board of commissioners. And so I respectfully hand them to you for your consideration and may have any other questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Chief Burke this evening? Councilmember Adam.
As I said, it has been changed also to instead of just saying a ban on fireworks, it says a ban on the discharge of fireworks. Would that change, what would that change?
That's an excellent point. Thank you for the prompt. Yes, that was a very deliberate change because if you look at the basis of the state law and one of the considerations that it makes is for those people that use fireworks as a fundraising opportunity. And because of all the consternation that the city council and staff endured during the polling, it's not to impact those, it's just for public safety. And so if, if you're still allowed to sell them, and we're not trying to hurt anybody with a fundraising or anything else, what we're trying to do is just maintain public safety. And so if, for example, um, community group A was selling fireworks and all of a sudden weather, we're waiting till the last possible moment, so, and we had to break, we had to rug out for another somebody for celebration, but if we can allow it to happen, we want to. And then all of a sudden, we have to make the ban. We don't want to shut down the sale as such because there may be some other place they could go. And we don't want to impact that group. And so, yes, to your point, that was a very deliberate action to make sure that we didn't squash the sales, just the discharge.
Any other questions for Chief Burke? Councilmember Adam.
So the other question was about the ore and ore language, which you already mentioned. And I think, um, just a little background, when I, when this was, came up the first time, I asked around, um, you know, just to get the opinion. I felt like this was reasonable and that most people would see the distinction between this and the, either a full ban or not banning. And what was interesting is I saw a variety of responses. Some people would think this is a sneaky way to get banned, you know, or is this going to be turned into a ban every year? And others, you know, still want a full ban, you know, it was a, it was a huge range. But the one thing that I found a little concerning is that no one knew it was even being talked about. And, um, for me, just to have transparency and for the community to not feel like we're sneaking something in or this is, has any other intention than what it, it says, that it's an emergency ban based on science that, um, extreme fire danger scenario. I would like to ask that we ensure that the community is aware that this is being talked about and be allowed to ask questions and understand and feel comfortable with, um, what we're, what we're proposing.
We did have a public hearing scheduled for the last, um, meeting, which also means that it was noticed not only in our community, the whole, and our council, but also to the public that we're having a public hearing. And if council decides to reinforce this ordinance, we will have a public hearing again. So, um, you know, there, there also has to be a level of responsibility on the community to look at the council agendas because our, our PIO staff does publish those out on, uh, and notice our meetings out on Facebook as well. Um, so all of this information is out. Um, and when we do public hearings, we do have to do notices. So that is part of the process. And the public has been involved in... So that is part of the process, and the public has been involved in this conversation quite a bit over the last four years. So, you know, you're more than welcome to go tell all of your neighbors that they can come and discuss it, and we appreciate it if people actually came to hear what's going on. Councilmember Jenkin.
I just want to thank you for working on this, because I remember a few years ago, when we really needed something, a tool like this to protect our citizens. And thankfully, nothing happened, but we did get to the point where it was so extremely dry, it was fairly frightening. And I just want to say I really support this going forward, because I want to have that tool available for the safety of our citizens. When we get into a situation, we've seen enough fires this year to know how important it is to have that flexibility to do something. Because I do recall when we were in the same situation, we had nothing available to us. So thank you.
Mayor, if you don't mind, as a partner, the Fire District would love to offer to the city that if you decide to move forward in the discussion mode and have a public hearing, if you'll communicate that to me, I'd be happy to share it through our social media and my site as well. Because we do overlap in this area, and I'm happy to help in any way I can. I also make myself available that if you might have any questions, or you'd like to talk to any detail or whatever, please feel free to reach out, and several of you have, and I really welcome that. And so, a little bit off topic, and thanks for indulging me, but if any of the council ever just wants to have a conversation and come to the station, visit the office, talk about budget, equipment, any of those things, they offer, is there any time?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Chief Burke? Mayor President Meyer, open end, Councilmember Roig.
You know, I was previously hesitant on this ordinance for many reasons that Jennifer pointed out. And it sounded like there had been a pretty robust conversation over the years, but then it faded into kind of a low, or just in the background for a long time, and then right before the Fourth, it came back up again. And then, while we did do our due diligence in terms of advertising meetings, I think it was, for me, it was understandable. I was feeling the same way that some folks in the community were as well. But having seen, you know, what's happened over the last couple of years, is even, I mean, every year so far recently, suburban areas, forest fire in suburban areas, I think it's a scary concept that could very well happen here, and hopefully it doesn't happen here next summer. But it seems as though it's gonna be a risk that will, at some point, Western Washington's gonna face. I think this seems like a reasonable way to somewhat combat that.
Councilmember Hoag. I appreciate you bringing this forward. July 6, 2016, July 5, I attended a meeting, and I pleaded with the council at the time to consider allowing an emergency ban, because that was such a dry year. So I appreciate that you're still working on this, and thank you for bringing it forward.
Just, I'm sorry.
The advisory vote that we put forward to me is something that was brought forward to ask about banning fireworks, and it did not bring forward banning on emergency. So I feel like that would bring a different vote. So that's just one thing I want to mention.
Mayor, if you don't mind, one more comment, please. Just to be clear, because of the way the state law is structured, if the council takes action in this calendar year or before July 4 of 2019, there's a full year before it is eligible to be acted upon. So in other words, if the worst-case scenario, if the council approves this before the end of the year, and next year we have the worst, driest July 4 ever, there's no way that you can enact this. It will be the following year. And so I just want to make that clarification. So even moving forward, you're really having to have a long-range sight to say this is for the future. It would be 2020, July 4, before it could be possible.
You know, Councilmember Anthe.
I appreciate that we followed all of the legal rules of noticing, but I do think that in the past, when we've had discussion over topics that are of high interest to the community, that we have highlighted them when we announced the agenda on Facebook, social media. And I feel like in this situation, we have included the community in having an advisory vote. And so I actually think the community will be supportive of this, but I think that we... It would be in our best interest to have this not be a surprise to the community. And since we know, based on my experience of asking people if they knew this was being discussed, and they said they did not have any idea, that it would be in our best interest for the community to know that this is being discussed before the decision is made.
And as I stated, the RPIO will be publishing information, just as we do some every one of our council meetings. So that information will get out there, and that's just a matter of fact. So thank you. Thank you. Do you have any other comments? Can we have any other comments, please, or discussion? Councilmember Walker?
Yeah, I've got mixed feelings on this, and I've got a different, I guess, perception of history of what happened in 2016. But nonetheless, the community have the option, right, to pull ban. I was, in my preferences, saying this, Councilmember Roig, and others that, I actually voted for the ban through the advisory vote. Yeah, I could live without them, but there's a lot of people here that want fireworks, and that's what the vote said. So if I'm here to represent the people that voted me to sit here and represent them, that's, I mean, we've had our test on that. But we didn't ask them if, you know, during exceptionally dry conditions, would you be okay with taking a year off? I think it might be relevant to put this back as an advisory measure. And I don't think it's worth the budgeting aspect of doing it as a standalone, but if we, once we get into a discussion, if there's any other legislative issue we want to ask the public about, if there's a TBD issue or anything else, if we're doing one, it doesn't cost a whole lot to add another, to add another ballot measure onto the ballot. I mean, it's a lot of ways, just like everything in government, it's either really serious or really silly, and it's this kind of combination too. But there's a lot of people that are really traumatized by fireworks every year. You know, the danger is there, but a lot of people have a good time with it too, and I don't think it's dangerous. City had options during a dry time to do many things to let people know that they shouldn't be doing fireworks, and that's not what the city did at that time. I think the ordinance is pretty well-written, and it's interesting, because you are the one that advises the mayor based upon the science that you're aware of, you know, things look really bad. And then the authority goes to the mayor to do the temporary ban, which I think is a good structure. So I think the ordinance is well-written, I think it could work. But I do think it's up to the public, it's really kind of their thing, and it's their danger. And it's worth asking them, but this is something they like to do.
Any other feedback, or questions or comments? Councilmember Arrington.
Chief, thanks for being here and bringing this forward. I like to see the robust conversations, and so many of our council members that truly support our citizens. I think it is pretty clear that we're not changing our ordinance to allow fireworks in the city, except under one circumstance, and that's when there's an extreme fire danger. And that's not a, I think it's gonna be a bad-year decision, and that's one where we have a little fire fuel, moisture levels, those are absolute science-measurable. I just got back from a week over in Eastern Washington, there's still an extreme fire danger in most communities, and I think ours is an exception, in the west half of the state where we have usually a lot of rain, so we said, look, this is usually not an issue. But more and more, we're starting to see the effects of climate change, and probably more importantly, we have these beautiful summers. We're starting to understand that, especially ones in California this year, where they have the highest loss of properties and acreage that they've ever had. So we understand that we have a growing problem, and our state's already identified that our state is at a higher risk. To me, it's all about public safety, this is about protecting our citizens. I'm not against, people can enjoy their fireworks, with one exception, and that's in these extreme fire danger when the risk is too high to loss of life or property. We don't deal with wildland fires as much as some other areas of our state. I think we're fortunate here to have a wildland team in the Duval Fire Department that is so well-respected, they're sent all over the other states to help provide support and put out fires. But I do see this as a public safety, I think this is one that I respect, that will have a good discussion between yourself and the mayor, and being able to make that decision. I think that's why our citizens elected us and want us to be able to put public safety first. I think this is a good ordinance. I do agree that we want to get as much information out, so our citizens can come and let us know how they feel about this. Pro or con, we want to hear that. So I think we'll have that opportunity, this is a discussion tonight. But I think prior to the voting, we'll have opportunity to have a public input. And my hope is that they'll understand that this is really a limited scope, and it's only in those extreme fire danger times that we would ban fireworks. But I thank you.
Councilman Pryor.
All right, I'll try to maybe make one last statement. But so I think it feels like we're heading in the right direction, and hopefully we can obviously do our legal obligation, notification for hearings and so forth, and it is available to everyone. It just takes a little bit more civic mindedness to get in there and read through the package and stuff. But I would propose that we maybe think about doing a joint open house, or, you know, put it on Facebook and just go ahead and do that little extra bit that specifically calls this out. Because I feel like this is headed in the right direction, and I feel like there's a good support for the core purpose of this ordinance.
Councilmember Jenkin.
So once again, over the years, I've seen you make very good decisions for this community, so I'm putting a lot of trust in that. I don't think what we're discussing here is a ban, and you can't do fireworks, or have to slip anything in there like that with our community. What I think, what I'm trying to address here is, in the last three years, I've run from fires while hiking, and that's never happened before in Washington. I've installed a sprinkler system in my yard, because I backed a forest. And I'm seriously concerned watching all the fires taking place, and seeing what happened two years ago. I just think that if you asked anybody in the community, they would definitely be fine with having a tool to protect the community from a major fire. My issue is, is that if we were to delay it, we still have another year. And so I'm thinking in terms of timing. And so I'm just wanting us to remember that, you know, it's about timing, and it's really not, for me anyways, my family, we all participate, we do fireworks every year, when it's not dangerous. So that's not what we're trying to stop. I don't want the community to think that we're trying to stop them or sneak in something. We're just trying to put tools in place so that we can protect them if we ever get into that situation that we were in in 2016.
So, Councilmember Henry.
Really quick, I just have one thing that popped in my head. So this is just within city limits, I would just want you to hear if you had any ideas of the impacts this could have on... If we call it an emergency ban, is it gonna impact the areas outside of the city limits, you think? Or, I mean, for the most part, I support this, and I think most people might just not discharge. But are there any trouble areas you foresee, that people are just going outside of city limits, and setting off and causing a bigger issue?
There's always a risk, and to be honest with you, as far distal as we are from Seattle and King County, the unincorporated areas, patrol, and I'm not speaking poorly of King County Sheriff's Office, but it's tough to cover that many miles. And the Fire District alone is an additional 50 square miles to the city of Duval. And so we're a pretty vast, wide-open space, and maybe it's hard to do that. And so even in times where it's not an extreme fire risk, we have some crazy displays. And I say that, I'll say affectionately, but respectfully, because, you know, a lot of illegal fireworks, but they're done safely if there's kind of a hypocrisy in itself. But there is nothing that would prevent anyone with an emergency ban in a city from going into an unincorporated county and discharging wherever they want, because I don't know of any action currently on the agenda for the King County Council that would do anything similar. Back in 2016, when this resurgence began, there was a lot of discussion, and the council members were hearing some of the complaints and concerns and the like, but it just didn't gather any footing. And so hopefully, you know, we start in our home, and then we work out. And so if we're able to do something successfully here, then I could be potentially a steward or a champion, and we move forward and try to help with the rest of the chiefs who have done something successfully in the other parts of King County. And again, not to take away, but, and I think my phrase that I used earlier, trying to mitigate the difference between public safety and public interest, because through the advisory vote, there was a specific interest in the public to maintain the ability to discharge fireworks. That was clear, that was a message that we all heard. As a fire chief, I have to be against anything that flies through the air that's burning, right? But at the same time, I'm respectful to the public opinion, up until it hits that threshold of public safety. And I think, and that's why I'm so supportive of this ordinance, in that we can kind of balance both. You know, we don't want to take the fun away unless we absolutely have to protect, and that's it. But to your question, that will be another fight, another day.
Thank you. Right. Council, so the final question would be, do you want to move this forward to public hearing? And we'll go down the line, actually, because we've heard a lot from people multiple times. So we'll just start down here and go around the dice. Did you just take it, or not? Yes. I just, I really like the idea of an infonight, so if you could potentially do that for a public hearing, I'm ready to go to a public hearing, but I think that was really a great idea from Councilmember. Let me ask staff, do we have the capacity during the budget process to do an open house?
We can always do an open house, but we are really, we have a lot of meetings on our plate for the next months, or next several months. Let me ask a question, when would we have to completely do this? Do we have until the end of the year?
To be honest with you, I believe that we have our reads, we have until the day before July 4.
Yes, correct.
Right, so it has to be, because we lose, it's a year, you have to have a year from when it's enacted after the next July 4.
So we could do an open house towards the end of our budget process, and actually, if we could set something up.
Councilmember Jenkin.
I'm in favor of an open house, and getting the information out there, and I'm in favor of moving it forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Anthe.
I feel comfortable with an open house, and I just want to clarify, when I expressed the concern about speakiness, it wasn't that I felt like we were being sneaky, it was the feeling that the community could potentially have the first Fourth of July when it's, an emergency ban is put into place, and they feel hot of heart. Maybe they purchased all their fireworks and didn't know that it was even a possibility. So that is what I was trying to convey, so I apologize if it came across a different way.
Councilmember Iron.
Yeah, well, I'm sympathetic to the amount we have on plate right now. I think, considering the timing, I think this is a good time to bring this up, because then we could potentially look at, you know... Seeing as you have until July 4, I think it seems reasonable to maybe put this to January, do an open house, maybe try to do something at the fire station, and... maybe try to do something with the fire station, and obviously get promises from all the council members to show up and answer questions. And so, and then also move it forward in a timeframe that's, I don't think we have to, you know, get this through this month, and so I think it'd be fine if it went through next month or February.
Thank you. Councilmember Hope.
I'm definitely in favor of moving this forward. I am in favor of an open house, because I'd love to hear from the community, as long as we don't do it in June.
Councilmember Walker.
Yeah, like, I'm, I agree with the idea of having an open house, I approve that. I don't know all of what administration and all the staff are doing, and it seems like they've got a lot to do, since they don't even have time to give us information before council meetings. It seems like they have a lot to do, and I respect that. So I would say we could look at this next year sometime, if that would be agreeable. I think the timing is, I agree, critical. We don't, I mean, it takes a year to be enforceable. I think it would be a good, maybe spring, early, you know, while families are still here before school lets out. Timing would be good, and getting through all the budget stuff, and knowing where we are. I don't think this is a unintended burning issue we got to deal with right now. But I think we could look at it early next year, and have a meeting, and get feedback, and listen to folks.
Thank you. Councilmember Remington.
I do think we have time. These things are often no more pressing in the summer when it's hot, and people are just breathing all that smoke for weeks, and hoping that never happens again. Seems to change a little bit in the winter. But I would support waiting, I think, getting a, me personally, I think our public hearings are a very important tool for us as council, and that we don't necessarily need to have a open house. I think we have capacity here to have plenty of our citizens come. If we do the announcement, both through the fire district, as well as through our city process, the discussion board, and many other places, that we have access to ourselves, that we can invite them to a public hearing and have a good discussion with our citizens.
Thank you. Great, sounds like we have consensus, so we'll work the staff on, it looks like most folks want an open house, so we'll work the staff of the fire district on just setting a date for an open house, and then setting a date for a public hearing.
Outstanding, thank you for your consideration and support.
All right, do you not have any executive sessions this evening, so do you have a motion to adjourn?
So do.
All of us in favor?
Aye.